We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Identify topics of discussion in our closed session items are as follows. 2.1 Recommended Expulsions, 2.2 Recommended Suspended Expulsions, 2.3 Recommended reinstatements, 2.4 Recommended Review Continued Expulsions, 2.5 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Complaints, 2.6 Conference with Labor Negotiator, 2.7 Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, 2.8 Conference with Rural Property Negotiators, 2.9 Anticipated Litigation. There are two matters that involve facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against the district but which facts and circumstances are not yet known to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. And 2.10 Public Employee Evaluation. Public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. We have any public comment? Seeing as there is none, the board will now adjourn to closed session. Welcome. We will now convene the regular session. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the proceedings, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran servirá como intérprete del español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public who would like to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form, located on the table at the northeast entrance of this room. Please hand the completed form to Acting Board Manager Leah Martinez before the item comes up on the agenda. She is in the back of this meeting room. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item on which you would like to comment. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone located in the stand located in the front of the room. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Is there any board action? There is nothing to report in action taken in the closed session. There are revised item enclosures, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 6.11, and 6.13. We have one revision to the board meeting agenda. We are removing item 6.2-4217 Energy Services Master Agreement for Crowley and Houston Elementary Schools from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
Sir, I'll move.
I'll second. On a motion by Board Member Belt, seconded by Board Member Gabey, call for the vote.
Motion passes. Six votes yes, one absent. And student votes yes.
Student performance. Presenter Divisadero Middle School Orchestra will be presenting tonight and will executive director of student services Natalie Garza.
Good evening, Board. I'm Natalie Garza and I'm very excited to welcome to the stage Divisadero Middle School Advanced Orchestra. The Divisadero Orchestra is under the direction of Jayden Perez and Assistant Director Maxton Bierra, and tonight the students are performing Burst by Brian Valdez. This piece is energetic and loved by students and audiences alike. So, Board members, if you'd like to come around front so we can welcome in the team.
Amazing job. Thank you, Divisadero Advanced Orchestra. Let's give them another round of applause.
That was amazing. Focus on student learning. We'll start 4.1 Spotlight on Good Things Happening in the District. Presenter Superintendent Kirk Schrum.
Thank you, President Naylor, Board members, and our audience. We are, again, obviously, what a great way to start a board meeting, always thrilled to see the exceptional talent at our schools. And, you know, our BOPA programs are a clear example of that. And, again, these are students that probably were in some of the music offerings we have in elementary school and then now have arrived in middle school and are in the orchestra in those pieces and will soon move to high school and continue in orchestra band and all of the other things that we have. So, that talent pipeline moving on, and so very proud of our students and our staff that build that skill in our students. So, as we talk about our spotlight, we want to begin with Mountain View Elementary. Each year they have an amazing event where they welcome the community and first responders to recognize and remember the events of September 11th. And so we want to thank everyone who attended. Our students read poems and showed their respect and appreciation for our local responders. Viva Blunt held their literacy night, also another yearly event that they have. More than 150 families attended the space-themed event, enjoying activities like scavenger hunt, hands-on mysteries, and a special readers theater performed by upper-grade students. Events like this bring family together to celebrate learning, strengthen school-community connections, and spark curiosity through fun-themed literacy activities. So, thank you to not only the families but also the staff and the teachers and others that put these events together. As we continue to celebrate and recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, multiple schools celebrated this month in September. From school performances to incorporating the celebration into the classroom, students feel seen and we help encourage mutual respect and appreciation for all cultures. And you see a few photos from some of the events across our campuses. Now, we've come to you before with some of our school sites that, as they've engaged in the Solution Tree Professional Learning Community work, that have been recognized for their achievement. And so we have another promising practice school that we want to recognize. Recently, this was Mineral King Elementary, recognized as Solution Tree Promising Practice Association. Yes. School community at work. So, congratulations to Mineral King on that achievement, and we hope to continue to see our schools receive this recognition. Recently, we also hosted Mike Maddos from Solution Tree for a two-day workshop centered around tiered systems of support, and every school throughout our district was able to send their site leader and members of their guiding coalition team to attend that workshop as we continue to build foundations to strengthen our professional learning communities, which are a key part of our board's theory of action around how we build professional capacity in our staff. So, congratulations to Mineral King and our other schools as they continue this journey. Also, shout out, many of us had the chance to go to the fair recently, last month. All of our high schools with agricultural teams participated in the event. Lot of success, over 87 students placed in the competition with seven reserve champions and six champions. These students spend a significant amount of time caring for these animals in this event, and so I want to congratulate them and their advisors who also spend equally a large amount of time helping to support the students in this process. Also occurring this time of year, many of our high schools are hosting their LOS, Leaders of Tomorrow, events where students from different academies, and pictured here we have first responders and law and justice, interview industry experts in their field. Every student in an academy has the opportunity to participate in a similar event as they're occurring over the next few weeks. In addition, our automotive students recently met with industry partners to interview for internship opportunities. And, again, we cannot do this work without our community partners who open the doors to our students to come in, many of whom even get hired as a result of these processes as they graduate. We appreciate the community engagement, and I want to thank our staff and community for having the relationships that lead to the success of our students. Last night, we attended the Spotlight for our band showcase. Each year, our Visilia Education Foundation sponsors this event. It was an incredible night. The weather was perfect, and so we want to thank all of our community who attended, the support for our visual and performing arts, the cheer squad, the dance team, and the band. All performed from each of our four conference high schools and did an outstanding job. Their shows looked great. Another item that's really important to me that we began, our board approved several years ago, were some partnerships. Of course, now districts across state are copying us, but that's okay. How we reached out and created some partnerships with local universities for guaranteed admission. When our students get connected as early as their freshman year into these opportunities, they have a chance to go in the summer, they have a chance to do work throughout the year to learn about the schools. It increases the percentage of our students wanting to pursue this option. So, this October 1st, we hosted our first college partnership info night. Over 100 families were in attendance. This is more than double the number of families who attended last year, so we will be moving, I'm sure, to a larger venue for that. Families had the opportunity to hear directly from UC Merced, Fresno Pacific, and Fresno State. Those are the three schools we have the guaranteed automatic admission with so far. Programs and financial opportunities. We see the numbers in students participating in our automatic admissions program. Since its inception, we have had 32% growth of students registering for the Bulldog Bound Program and an incredible 160% increase in students registering for the Merced Automatic Admissions Program. I know this will, and many of those students, by the way, receiving scholarships. And so, you know, we've also recently had a couple of other universities reach out interested in creating this type of partnership. So, just wanted to give a highlight to that and thanking our teachers, our counselors in particular, who really work to make sure our students are aware of these opportunities and sign up. And so if you're a freshman out there, sign up Bulldog Bound, right? You get a student ID, you get piped in, and that may be or may not be where you want to go to college, but you're going to have some great experiences along the way. So, thank you to our college and career counseling team. Also, this Saturday, I had a chance to come by the office. As the board knows, we've invested in a commitment to increase the professional development of our teachers around the science of reading, particularly our primary teachers. We had over 100 teachers raise their hand and say, "I'm interested in being part of this two-year cohort," which involves work outside of the school, almost I equate it to maybe getting a master's degree sort of experience. And so there are a few Saturdays throughout the year where the teachers will come together to engage in learning. And so this Saturday was our first one. We had over 100 of our teachers here all day on a Saturday. And so I just want to take a moment to say how, just when I came in Saturday morning to spend a few minutes, just how in awe I was of our teachers who work all week long but then said, "You know what? I want to continue my development because I know it's going to contribute to what I'm able to do for our students." I don't know if since I've been here, we've engaged in this type of professional development and certainly have not done things that extend into Saturdays or over the weekend. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate and respect these teachers who have raised their hand to be invested in and took time on a Saturday to do that. And I know we are going to see amazing things happen across our classrooms because of this board's investment in the development of our teachers. So, thank you to our teachers who were here bright and early on Saturday morning and in good spirit and were engaged in learning all day long. Also recently, last week, we had our board study session. We have about four or five of these a year where our board comes together to really spend time through a day workshop to discuss topics related to policy or where we want to go as a district. This time around, we had conversations around our facilities planning, residency, our LCAP, and the budget. Thank you, Board, for being fully present during these meetings and having these conversations that help us as we think about the direction and future of our district. Now, we got to take a moment to do a little bit of a moment of celebration here. So, every year, California School Boards Association has what they call Golden Bell Awards. And so there are different categories where districts can submit projects or work that's occurring in the district related to different categories. And so we are very proud. You can only enter three categories, can only have three submissions a year, and this is the first time one of our submissions has not only made it to a final round but received, will receive in December, the coveted Golden Bell. And so I'm so excited to congratulate our TK Pre-K team for winning the Golden Bell for their TK Pre-K Blended Instruction Model. Every classroom that's in this model is led by a team of a credentialed TK teacher, preschool instructor, and a paraprofessional. And we see the astounding results of these teachers. Many of you have been in the classroom, you see what the students are doing and their academic achievement coming out of TK going into kindergarten. Thank you to our early childhood learning team for your hard work and dedication to seeing this program and our youngest learners succeed, and we got the Golden Bell. Congratulations. And so moving on, lots of events this month. Patriot Day, Board Member Spotlight was continuing with Mr. DeYoung, our Hispanic Heritage Month, Native American Day, and also High Five Friday at Charter Home Academy, and our virtual teacher residency highlight. Also, a couple of other things that have occurred recently in the past week or so. We had National Custodian Day, and so we know how valuable those of us that have been in schools and work in the district, how valuable those individuals are to us being able to educate our students, and also National Coaches Day today. And so we want to give them a shout out for all the work, the mentorship, and the examples they set both on and off the field for our students. So, having said that, that concludes the Spotlight.
Thank you. It's always great to hear what's happening. Lots going on in the schools, so I appreciate that. Up next, 4.2 CASP Comparable Data and Promising Practices. Executive Director Teaching and Learning, Breann Phillips.
We're up and running. All right. Good evening, Board President Naylor, Board and Superintendent Schrum. Tonight, we are providing you with comparable data on the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress alongside with Bright Spots of Effective Practices. So, let's get started. Board, the information in this presentation is aligned with our mission of every student learning every day. I also want to highlight that this directly relates to our first core belief and commitment that states that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. Tonight, we will be looking at our CASP comparable data. We'll be looking at some specific bright spots that are happening within our district, and then we will also call out some growth opportunities. This table identifies districts throughout the state that have similar number of student enrollment and unduplicated rates. If you recall, last November, we actually had these same school sites or school districts identified. This chart is in order of least enrollment to greatest enrollment, and our unduplicated rate is determined by the number of foster, or determined by the number of students that are identified as foster youth, homeless, socioeconomic disadvantaged, or an English-language learner. Before I move on, I do want to point out the Teleri, and then we have in quotes, unified. What that is, is that is all of the Teleri Unified Schools with Visilia removed. So, that's how we have calculated their percent proficiency rates. What I'd like to highlight is that in ELA, our students rank third in our percent proficient out of all nine, and then in math, we are ranked third as well. This is an increase from last year. Last year, we were fourth in mathematics, so we actually have increased by one in comparison to our similar schools. So, while this is just a snapshot in time, this is our last year's data, we're going to take a bit of a deeper look into our three-year trend data. So here, BUSD is in the bottom, and it's alpha order, just that's how we organized our chart. So, you can see over three years, our English Language Arts growth. In 2022, 23, we were at 42% proficient, 23, 24, at 44% proficient, and then this last academic year at 46% proficient, which is a 4% gain over two years. If you look at our other districts, similarly, some have remained stagnant, some have declined, or some have had minimal growth. So, we have been able to show a 4% growth over these last three years. Jumping into our three-year math comparable, over the past few years in math, BUSD has seen incremental growth. That growth has placed us in the upper third of the comparable districts, and we are currently at 30% proficient. While what's not noted here, but we want to call out, is we do review our comparable data to our schools in our county. We recognize that locally, there are districts that are showing greater growth than us right now. In response, we are committed to accelerating our continuous improvement efforts by learning from our bright spots and our strategic actions in our district and in the surrounding schools. So, what we'll do now is jump into a few of our bright spots. Right now, in our English Language Arts, we are showcasing schools that have demonstrated growth over, the greatest growth over the past two school years. And what they've done is they have strong systems in place to support their student progress. So, you can see on the screen here, Washington, Golden Oak, Hurley, Pinkham, and Riverway all have grown over 10 percentage points over the last two years. We also would like to indicate the schools showing with our highest percent proficient. Here you can see Oak Grove at 72%, Shannon Ranch at 71%, and Denton at 70%. Similarly to our ELA, this slide highlights the growth in elementary mathematics. Hurley, Global Learning, Pinkham, Willow Glen, and Mountain View each achieved a growth of eight percentage points or more. We want to take a moment to spotlight Hurley and Pinkham because they showed growth in both ELA and math in this, over the course of the last two years. And similarly, in our schools with the greatest percent proficient, here we see Oak Grove with 65% proficient, Denton with 62%, and Shannon Ranch with 58%. Moving into our middle schools, you can see what we've indicated here, our highest percent proficient in the 24-25 school year as well as those showing the greatest growth in the past two years. Ridgeview Middle School achieved the highest proficiency rates with a 49% in English Language Arts and a 33% in Mathematics. La Jolla Middle School demonstrated the strong improvement with 12 percentage points of growth in ELA, and while Divisadero Middle School showed notable progress with a five percentage point increase in Mathematics. And in our high schools, you can see the highlighted growth over the past two years. Redwood High School has demonstrated significant progress by 80 points in English Language Arts and 35 points in Mathematics. Similarly, Vitek has shown steady improvement with a seven percentage points gain in ELA and 16 in Mathematics. So, I want to take a moment here on this slide and celebrate and call a celebration and then also a call to action that we have as a result of this data. Starting with the celebration, when we look at our recently reclassified English Language Learners, and if my pointer would point, it's the box in the middle. So, we can see that our recently reclassified English Language Learners on ELA are performing 16.3 points above standard. Meanwhile, if we look in comparison to our English-only students, our English-only students are performing on ELA at 15.5 points below standard. That is a 31-point, a 31.8 percent point difference. When we reclassify our students, they are outperforming as well as opening doors for our students as they progress through our middle and high schools. It is not only a celebration of their hard work and a reflection of their learning, but for us, it is our dedication to what we need to do to work towards reclassification of our students by the fifth grade. We also, looking at this data, have a call to action. Our data for English learners, which is the far-left box, are performing at 94.2 points below standard. This data follows similar trends from previous years. So, some of the intentional actions that we have taken this year. With your support in the spring, we purchased English Language Development Curriculum that aligns to our Wonders curriculum. We have explicitly called out English Language Development Instruction within our instructional day, and at the secondary level, we have built out our English Language Development programs through Avid Excel and Avid Emerge. We, as a district, are narrowing our focus on our English Language Learners. While we have the structures and resources in place, we will continually analyze student data to inform our next steps. Recently, as in yesterday, we had a great session that we titled Listen and Learn. We have teachers in our district that are performing year after year, and their distance from standard, their student scores' distance from standard is increasing year after year. We identified these teachers and invited them in to listen and learn from them, to ask them, what are their promising practices that they are doing in their PLCs? What are they doing with their assessments? How are they driving their instruction? How are they providing Tier Two support in their classrooms? What was lifted up from them was that they, key learnings from the teachers is knowing that they know every one of their students and what their students need for acceleration. They know the standards, and they backwards map from the interim assessments. They adhere to their commitments of their collaborative teams, and they use their student data to drive their instruction. These teachers shared valuable insights in how the district can best create conditions that support educators in improving student learning outcomes. Throughout the year, we are narrowing our focus on creating highly effective classrooms, which you will hear in my next presentation. In order to do this, we're doing this through our instructional blocks. Through that by, in order to do this, we're doing this through our instructional blocks. This approach also tiers or integrates our tier-one embedded practices into our daily instruction. We analyze and implement data and provide targeted coaching and feedback to support both teachers and administrators in improving our instructional clarity and student learning outcomes. And with that, are there any questions?
Any public comment? Any board member comments? Thank you for all your hard.
I'm sorry, I was like processing. Okay, back to first, thank you for the report. I'm sorry, I'm like mid-thought and not speaking well. So thank you for the report, and I always, always appreciate kind of that look at bright spots because we do have lots of talented teachers and even, you know, lots of teachers that are working, all of our teachers, working really, really hard. And so I appreciate that we look for those bright spots and then hear from them and how do we replicate and, you know, kind of systematize some of that. So I'm looking at Slide 16, which was kind of just that last one, and it says, kind of narrowing our focus. So based on, I heard you say something kind of quickly about that the teachers mentioned that they backwards plan from the interim assessments. So that's a little bit different, I think, than previously what kind of we've heard in the plan. So how are we taking what we've learned, like what changes or are there different steps we're implementing based on that?
Yeah, so let me clarify. So these were our teachers that have the greatest growth. And so what we recognize is, is the assessments that we have in our district are our Standards Mastery Assessments through our I Ready. And many teachers are backwards mapping from the I Ready. What our teachers told us in the Listen and Learn session yesterday was they're using the interim assessments through the CAS in order to backwards map. So they are using those question types in order to identify the rigor of the standard, the language that students need, and the questioning stems that students need. And so from that, and so that was a lift up that we're learning from them in terms of what's informing our practices.
Okay, so does that make us evaluate our standards mastery and see if they, like if that's an adjustment that needs to be made, like are they correlating to the interim?
Absolutely. We had some teachers point out yesterday as well that what, you know, there are, they do see value within the standards mastery and that many of the standards masteries do align to the FIAVs, the interim assessments. However, there are some that they feel that they need to lean on the FIAVs more. So in working with our teachers, we want to bring them in and to inform us around, okay, which ones should we lean on? And if there is a need to pivot or change direction on the on the kind of moments in time that we assess our students.
Board member belt?
Mrs. Phillips, Slide eight, which highlighted again those the bright spots of elementary ELA.
Yes.
What is the distinction? There are two areas, Golden Oak and Pinkham, that added PLC systems or unit planning and PLC. Is that was a high point that they felt like was something different? What's the?
Yeah, so there's a lot of systems that we're learning from each of the school sites. So what we actually will have some follow-up principal conversations with with our principals around. What are you specifically doing? What are the highlights that you're seeing? What's in your grade levels with high-performing PLCs that are generating that are generating the student outcomes? And so we are going to listen to our principals and lift up from them. What is it that the systems you put in place in order to generate that?
So those two are actually saying, we definitely have seen a difference with either the focus or the depth or what we're getting out of PLCs.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Thank you so much for your report.
I'm not going far.
I know. So moving on to 4.3 Strategic Plan Theme One Update. Again, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Breann Phillips.
All right. Good evening again. I am excited to update you on our Strategic Plan Theme One. As as we know, just to refresh our memory on our cadence, we are each month identifying a strategic plan theme that we'll be providing you an update on. And then and then we will also zoom in on some of our progress indicators later. I think that comes in in a couple of months. So tonight, you guys, you will see all three of our core beliefs come to life in the work of Theme One, as well as how we hold our commitments to the core of our designing and development of our strategic plan actions. Just a moment here to relook at our blueprint for the future. The top section is what you, the board, have done for us and have identified what we need to do in order to improve student learning outcome. In response to that, we developed a strategic plan. And then from the bottom of that, that's how we're being held accountable to our progress indicators on the implementation of our strategic plan, as well as our priority student outcomes. So this is, not that we can read that, but this is our overview of our VUSD strategic plan. As you can see, this thoroughly addresses the needs of our students in our community to move us forward to 2030. Tonight, we are going to be focusing on Theme One, High Expectations, High Achievement. Theme One takes a comprehensive approach to enhancing existing and designing new systems to ensure that students in Visalia can learn more here than anywhere else. The focus area we'll be updating on tonight is academic achievement and preparedness. We'll zoom in into our initiative, which is ensuring every classroom is highly effective. Now, within that initiative, this is the action we're actually going to dig into tonight. And the action is we to design and implement the VUSD model of a highly effective classroom. So just to reorient us to to what we see on the slide, on the left are how we are action owners guide their work through each phase of the strategic plan. So within our research for our highly effective classroom framework, we began with interviews. We went out to our students, we went out to our teachers, and we went out to our administrators. We asked our students, what did what takes place when you learn, what needs to take place within your classroom in order for you to engage in your learning? When are you learning the most? What what do you see as 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 roadblocks to your learning? And similarly, we asked those questions to our teachers and as well as our administrators. Some key insights that were lifted up from that is that our students are desiring very engaging and academically challenging classrooms. There was also our students lifted up that they felt that there was a high focus on social emotional learning and not enough on their academic rigor. As what also recently, our student advisories just took had a survey, and they lifted up the same sentiment, that they also wanted to have to be challenged in their classrooms with greater rigor to deepen their critical thinking skills. We also worked, looked at comparable districts. What are they focusing on? And how are they moving their their student outcomes forward as well? What we found was, is that across the nation, really, is there is a deep focus on tier-one, on that first instructional practices and in deepening our understanding of that. And finally, we dug into some research. So and I know it says Hattie's on there, it's Hattie's Research. So we looked at some meta-studies around what are the best instructional practices? We leaned on the five dimensions of teaching and learning, as well as universal design for learning. What we did was we took that literature and we crosswalked it with our tier-one embedded practices to really inform us of what should we be moving towards. What this did for us was it put us into our design, into our design phase. We took our current state where we needed to increase engagement and grade-level academic rigor. We identified gaps. We had components of a highly effective classroom framework developed, but we didn't have a system for implementation. And then I creating our ideal state of where every student learns every day in a highly effective classroom. But what we recognize across the bottom, you see that professional development, we have to make sure as we are designing out and focusing on different components of a highly effective classroom, that we are providing the appropriate professional development for our teachers, for our administrators, for our instructional coaches, to make sure everybody can move along the way. So I want to bring us back a couple of years to 2023. In 2023, we built a strong foundation through our balanced models of instruction. These balanced models emphasize not only developing our students' core knowledge and skills, but specifically what our students want now, critical thinking. They direct, this is directly responding to what our students are calling for. Last year, we introduced, we introduced our tier-one embedded practices. These are designed to set the conditions for student success within every classroom. These practices ensure that students are recognized and valued, they have equitable access to rigorous learning experiences, and are supported in developing both academic skills as well as their social, social emotional skills. So this year, through our strategic plan, we have expanded our focus by building upon our balanced instruction frameworks and our tier-one embedded practices. We recognize the importance of integrating these elements into a unified vision. This framework provides clear guidance, structured processes, and comprehensive support for every aspect of classroom instruction. It ensures students experience consistency, rigor, and meaningful engagement, while teachers have a coherent approach to accelerate learning for all. We have defined the components of a highly effective classroom, which you can see on the right, as instructional infrastructure, learning engagement, and classroom environment. The highly effective classroom will move into the implementation phases over the coming years. We believe that focusing deeply on one area at a time will have the greatest system-wide impact. Therefore, during the 2526 school year, our focus will center on strengthening our instructional infrastructure. That's why there's a pink box around that one. With a targeted emphasis on tier-one embedded practices, establishing routines, effective routines and procedures. So we're just going to zoom in for a couple of minutes on the instructional infrastructure components, what we are focusing on this academic year. So within instructional infrastructure, we're focusing on curriculum, instructional clarity, as well as our assessments. So you can notice at the top left, we're going to focus in on just for a moment on our curriculum. So and I recognize guaranteed viable curriculum is very ed jargon-y, but what I'd like for us to talk about is a guaranteed viable curriculum from our parents' perspective. Because what matters most to our families and our students is that our teachers and our students know what they will learn, that are great, and that is our grade-level standards. So you can see here, it in a guaranteed viable curriculum, those are our priority standards, which were co-identified with teachers. We need to be sure that no matter where a student goes to school, that they will have the same opportunity to access those standards over the course of a school year, making common pacing. Within that common pacing, we want to make sure we have built-in time for reteaching and acceleration, as well as critical thinking. Lastly, every student and their teachers have a high-quality resources to use for their learning. Earlier, we talked about some successes of our PLCs, as well as we called out that we are seeing our PLCs driving our student outcomes. This is a result of what is in our theory of action, because we stand firmly behind our PLCs. They are the driving force for improving our student outcomes. Within our PLCs, teams analyze analyze data student by student and provide just-in-time support to extend learning opportunities. Throughout the year, we structure assessments in each content area to provide teachers with standards-aligned questions. These assessments allow educators to backwards map instruction and identify precisely where students need additional support. So I wanted to take a minute and provide you a current example of a system that is yielding positive results. So we're now in the third year of implementing our Benchmark Assessment System in math in mathematics. This work began in Math 1 and has expanded to create a comprehensive system that allows us to pinpoint areas of student success and areas of students needing supports in our grades seven through Math 3. So seventh grade, eighth grade, Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3. A recent celebration of this work is that in year-over-year growth, in Math 8, we observed a 20% growth in students performing on standard. And that is in our first benchmark that we that we just did. This demonstrates that our students are entering their coursework better prepared. And as a result, our teachers are able to adjust their instruction and extend students' critical thinking skills. And then we're going to move into our final component on curriculum, which is our instructional day and what we focused in on this year on our ELA block and our math block. This is to make sure that students get a full, well-rounded learning experience. We've brought more clarity to what teaching and learning look like each day. This includes updates on our instructional day, our literacy and math blocks. Our goal is to create shared understanding that no matter which classroom a student walks into, they experience strong, consistent instruction that helps them grow. At the same time, teachers continue to have the flexibility they need to meet, they need in order to meet students where they are and respond to their unique learning needs. While the while the structure of the day isn't new, we've refined each part to better connect the curriculum, instructional practices, and learning time. This helps ensure that every student receives all components of a high-quality instruction needed to master, needed to master grade-level standards. So now I'd like to take you into, and you'll see there's drafts incoming soon on this, what we are moving towards. We are moving towards bringing clarity around the instructional day and our instructional blocks to our families as well. So later this fall, you will find a Day in a Life of our students located on our VUSD website. This will be an interactive site. It is designed to give parents clear insight into their child's day and for what students are learning in each content area. For example, here we have our K2 instructional day. Parents can see the content areas that their students engage with and the time spent within each content area. From there, parents are going to be able to click on each of those, each of the content areas and view the instructional block in more detail. So we want to give you a preview on what's to come for our families in our future weeks. So if I were to select our literacy piece, it would zoom in into the literacy block. We can see in greater detail its components, as well as what students are learning during that time. The four main components here is that within our K2 English Language Arts, reading instruction, writing and grammar, phonics, and phonological awareness. But our parents will be able to zoom in further. So what our parents will be able to do is each of these subbullets will become live links. Within there, we are going to generate some videos that illustrate what students are doing during that learning time. So we have a model of that video, and I'm hoping Chuck could make it work. Every day, we are lucky to have each and every one of your children come to learn in Visalia Unified School District. Our commitment to you is to ensure that every classroom in every school is highly effective and that your students can learn in a way that balances the foundations for learning with important critical thinking skills they will need to succeed in their futures.
Our promise is simple. We teach the building blocks of reading step by step and with attention to detail. We check in often to see how students are learning, and when a child starts to struggle, we intervene early on with support. We're committed to helping children become confident readers in the early grades because literacy is more than a school skill. It's essential for navigating life and future opportunities. Now let's turn our focus to phonics instruction, what it is, why it matters, and what it looks like in our classroom.
Phonics instruction is essential because it helps children understand how letters and sounds work together to form words, a critical skill for learning to read. Learning Learning to read does not happen automatically and must be taught explicitly and systematically, especially in the early grades. By focusing on phonics, students build strong decoding skills through hands-on activities that help them learn how to read, spell, and write effectively.
All right, we're going to make our next letter. Our letter is P. Our letter P goes all the way down into the worm line, okay? Start at the plane line. We're going to go down to the worm line. Say, go up to the plane line. Make a bump. Land on the grass line. Say, pee, pam, p. Now I need someone to come up, and they're going to make our letter P. Cohen, do you want to try? All right, come on up. All right, eyes are on Cohen. Say, start on the plane line. Go down to the worm line. Go up to the plane line. All the way up to the plane line. Make a bump. Land on the grass line. Pee, pam, p. Go ahead and write your turn. Yeah, it was a really good letter, P, Cohen.
In every classroom, we want to see our students actively engaged in learning the standards with teachers who have created positive environments with clear structures for how students will be successful. There is nothing more important in Visalia Unified than empowering your children to have the foundation they need to be successful.
So while that's just a small glimpse of the work ahead of our teaching and learning team and developing out, we also will be developing out additional resources for how parents can support at home. This is an example of how our strategic action plans don't live in isolation. In Theme 2, we have our parent engagement, and so we are stretching our actions into our other themes in order to make sure we have a cohesive strategic plan. So in conclusion, throughout this year, you will see consistency across grade levels in schools. You will see board-approved curriculum, data-informed instruction, as well as our students actively engaged in their learning. And with that, any questions?
Thank you. That's a great presentation. Any board, any public comment? Any board member comments? Go ahead, board member, Gabby.
Sorry, sorry. It's curriculum I have to comment. So I love the videos. And like what they made me think of is it was like finally, like, like a look at what the students are doing. Because when you read that about what students were saying, that they wanted more critical thinking, and that basically kind of what I heard there is, you know, like, they're a little bit bored. It's a little bit easy. And then I look at like our, our plan, and it seems as though it's very teacher-heavy. Like, our teachers are working really, really hard, and nobody doubts it. I mean, you guys are working really hard, everybody is. But it's like, all of a sudden, then I'm also hearing like students saying they kind of want to be working harder. And so it's like, I look at that instructional day, and is there a way to map out, like, what are the students doing during that day? Because I see like, provide whole group instruction, like, provide, provide. And it's like, all, even the curriculum itself, or the opportunity to access standards, like giving teachers questions, that's all like teacher-directed. But it's like, how do we look at what's actually important is what the students are doing? Because we could be teaching a great lesson, but if no one's learning it, then it wasn't so great. And so I'm just like trying to think through, you know, like the, the stagnant that we're kind of in, and like maybe how we shift that to look at something that's like, I don't know, like something up there that's like, here's our instructional day, and for each of those components, here's what your student should be doing. And what does that student outcome look like?
Absolutely. And those are pieces that we work on with, with our teaching and learning team around developing out those look fours for what happens during those instructional, instructional blocks. So what are teacher actions, as well as what are student actions? Because ultimately, we want our student actions and their learning environment.
So to, to further answer your question, the videos that are being built out actually are going to show in more depth, as you click on each one of those, what that looks like for the student, and then the parent resources attached. So it will delve much more into, the point of that is so the parent can engage it, figure out what the kid is doing, their child is doing, and then how to support that at home. So that was just the first kind of prototype, but they, but where you saw the example of the instruction, many of them will focus on that. So when the, when the, you click on the block and it says, you know, phonics lesson, or you're in math, and it says whole group opener, it will actually show what those look like from what the student is doing.
Yeah, and that's awesome, because like, when I look at just phonics, you know, it's like, this is what the teacher's doing. But when I see that video, I'm like, oh, okay, that's what my student should be doing during the day. So, you know, that looks like a great resource for parents and just consistency within.
Any other board member comments? Thank you so much for the presentation. Moving on to 5.0, general public comment. General public comment on any topic not on the agenda may be heard at this time. If you have public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to share your comments at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments for general public comments to no more than three minutes, and individual topics to 20 minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. It is recommended that you begin your comments by stating your name. And I do have some green slips. Aliana Garcia.
Hi. Good evening, board. My name is Aliana Garcia. I am currently a law student at the San Joaquin College of Law. I am in education law class, and we're instructed to come to a board meeting, lay out a factual scenario, and apply applicable law that the board will likely follow for disciplinary action when dealing with freedom of speech and privacy issues. So the scenario does is a student posting on social media resulting in a disruption at school. Teacher endorses that post, and an administrator ends up releasing confidential information of the student. As for the post by the student, students have a right to freedom of speech pursuant to the First Amendment and California Constitution. However, that right is limited when it poses substantial disruption at school pursuant to Tinker v. Des Moines California Education Code 48907. This student will likely be disciplined pursuant to Education Code Section 49079, where school activities are disrupted. As for the employee endorsement, public employees also have a right to free speech. Their speech will be protected if they were speaking as a private citizen on a matter of public concern. And the employee's interest in commenting on matters of public concern outweighs the interest of the school district subject to the Pingreen decision. However, when the employee interacts with a post like this, it could pose a concern where there is kind of a blurred line between a student and professional relationship, and this would likely subject that public employee to discipline for unprofessional conduct pursuant to the Education Code 44932. In regard to releasing the confidential information of the student, that would be controlled under FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and the California Constitution. Students have the right to privacy of their student records with the respect of exceptions under the Education Code 49076. Shall administrators violate FERPA, they would likely be subject to discipline under Education Code. These tests are necessary to protect the students and employees, but also the disciplinary board to ensure the First Amendment is not violated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Blanca Sanchez.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board, teachers and staff. My name is Blanca Sanchez, and I'm the mother of Zoe Palmillas, a sixth grader at Royal Oaks Elementary. Zoe is a kind, gentle, and loving girl who faces some disabilities and challenges that make her learning experience a little different from most kids. Zoe has a speech delay and ADD, but despite those challenges, she shows up to school with a positive attitude and ready to learn. A year and a half ago, we moved up here from Southern California, and since then, Zoe has been the target of bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And although Zoe is incredibly brave and resilient, there has been times when she breaks down and cries and lets me know how she truly feels, the hurt, the confusion, and the frustration of being treated unfairly. No child should ever have to carry those feelings, especially ones who already face daily challenges as it is. I have met numerous times with the staff, with the principal, the vice principal, and with her whole IEP team. I do appreciate that some steps have been taken, but unfortunately, they do not seem to be enough. The bullying and harassment has not stopped. Sometimes I feel like it's getting worse, as they've gone to the point where food has been thrown at her just because they find it funny. Yard duties are made aware, only to direct Zoe to sit down somewhere else as if it's her fault, like if she's the problem, rather than addressing it and treating it as it is. It's assault. It shouldn't be brushed off like it's no big deal, leaving my daughter angry and embarrassed at the same time. This is why parents' involvement is so crucial. Parents need to be informed and involved because children spend most of their day at school, and we cannot address what we don't know, what we do not know about. Strong communication, accountability, and real follow-through from the school's part are essential to ensure our children are safe and valued and supported. I'm not here to place blame. I'm here to ask for help for Zoe and for every kid who may be quietly suffering because of bullying and the harassment that seems to be an issue around here. Through a parent dojo group chat before it was taken down by administration, I informed the parents about the issue, and it didn't surprise me that some said that they were not aware. And some thanked me for letting them know, and they assured me they would have a talk with their kids, reminding them the importance of respecting one another and being kind. Other parents have, other parents have reached out with horrible stories about bullying in the school and a few others in the area. It's, it's happening more and more, and it's terrible. I would suggest a channel where parents can be informed about these issues. It's important, and it can make a big difference. I really hope that sharing Zoe's story can help bring in the change that's needed. As a school board, you hold critical responsibility in ensuring the safety and well-being of all students. This includes establishing and upholding policies that create a safe and inclusive learning environment. You're also legally accountable for maintaining safe school conditions and protecting students from foreseeable risks such as bullying, violence, and inadequate supervision. I want to thank you for taking the time, listening to my concerns, and following me throughout this opportunity to advocate for my daughter's current situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Rocha.
So good evening, school board members and school board president. My name is Cynthia Rocha. I am the executive director of Think Together. And I just wanted to take some time to introduce myself. Think Together is fairly new to the Central Valley, and we've had the honor of being able to partner with your Expanded Learning Opportunities Program in the after-school programming, and it's just been a delight. We just wanted to express our gratitude for the warm welcome that we've had in bringing our STEM visual and performing arts, as well as creative writing programs to our after-school programming. And just want to extend our thank you and appreciation for having staff that have provided an environment that has been really welcoming to our program. I also additionally wanted to extend an invitation. We've been working really closely with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and our other partners, other contracted partners, who we work really closely with to plan a Lights On After-School Event, which is an event that is dedicated to making sure that the community knows about the benefits and the value of after-school programming and its role in being an extension of the school day and providing additional resources to students. And so this is planned for October 18th at Royal Oaks Elementary. We're really excited about the event. It's going to be open to our larger communities so that parents can find out more about the program that exists. And also extend an invitation to participate in our culminating events that you might already have a calendar for, but they happen at the conclusion of every six-week cycle, the next one being on October 31st at several of our sites. And so just wanted to extend that invitation, and again, introduce myself and just share my gratitude and appreciation.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving right along, 6.0 consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Gabby, seconded by board member Viegas, call for the vote.
Motion passes. Six yes votes, one absent, and student votes yes.
Okay, student representative report, Ms. Lila Krebsbach. From El Diamante High School, welcome. It's nice to see you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Lila Krebsbach, and I'm a senior at El Diamante High School and a member of USAV, our district-wide student leadership team. At our October USAV meeting, student leaders from our high schools came together to continue building our district-wide student voice feedback loop. The process supports VUSD's Forward 2030 Strategic Plan Action Item 2A 2.1, expand opportunities for student voice by giving students real opportunities to research, analyze data, and share ideas that help shape school culture. The first part of our meeting focused on the results from our September surveys about relationships and belongings, which include feedback from over 1,400 students across all our high schools. As we reviewed data, we noticed that about two-thirds of students said they feel connected and included at school, while about one-quarter wasn't sure. Around, around 75% of students said they know at least one adult on campus they can go to for support, while most students said they enjoy the events and traditions already happening. Many shared they'd like to see more events that are fun, affordable, and better advertised, like lunchtime games, rallies, and cultural events that involve everyone. During our group discussions, we identified three key areas to focus on, creating more ways for students to connect, having fun, improving communication about upcoming events, and getting a wider range of students involved. The second half of our meeting focused on survey development for October's topic, activities, and engagement. Using what we learned from last month's data, each site team worked together to design a new student survey. Teams chose to focus on this, on our past homecoming weeks, and one team chose to focus on their Big Harvest event. Teams then created three to five multiple-choice questions and one open-ended question to learn more about student experiences. Each group also decided when and how to share the survey with students and went to meet with ASV and site administrators to discuss the results. This process gives students ownership over every step, from gathering data to using it for real change, and keeps the feedback loop moving between students, schools, and the districts, and the Board of Education. Next steps include a survey window from October 7th to the 17th, site data reviews from October 20th to the 24th, and sharing results at our next USAV meeting on November 3rd. District-wide findings will then be presented to the Board of Education on November 18th, completing the cycle of student input and action. Through this work, USAV students are showing that leadership isn't just about ideas, it's about learning, listening, and using data to make our schools better. Today, we're helping build stronger connections, improve student engagement, and give every student a voice in shaping their school experiences. Thank you, and time for our site-level reports. Redwood's Homecoming Game was a huge success with strong school spirit and over 20 clubs joining them in their parade. Nominees enjoyed a week of celebration and were recognized at halftime. F's family steered them on. A first-quarter student culture survey showed most students feel included on campus, with fewer than 10% reporting otherwise, reflecting continued progress towards a welcoming school culture. El Diamante hosted Harvest for VUSD with over 1,100 students attending. Homecoming Week is in full swing, with the rally starting our week being a huge success, and we're excited to crown our king and queen on Friday, the 3rd. Golden West Homecoming Week kicked off on September 22nd with the annual Homecoming Carnival, where campus clubs hosted games and food booths that brought students together and set a spirited tone for the week. From September 22nd to the 26th, lunchtime activities and vibrant decorations built excitement leading up to successful rally and football game. The week concluded with their memorable royalty reveal, crowning Jeanne Claire Ortiz as queen and Riley Collins as king. Mount Winnie Drama Class put on a fantastic performance, "Don't Tell a Secret." The students put on a wonderful show, and Mount Winnie enjoyed a week of fun lunchtime activities with Hoco. Mount Winnie started a new tradition with Fun Friday prior to the start of school. Cheering dance team greeted students at the gate, where they were ushered into the decorated quad. The quad had music. The quad had music and pre-game face painting for all. Friday also consisted of a Hoco rally and carnival, where they revealed Mount Whitney's Hoco King and Queen at the football game. At Sequoia, Friday, September 26, was National Pancake Day, and Sequoia served fresh, hot pancakes to over 40 students on this day. Sequoia started October with Cancer Awareness Week. Each day was a different color, representing a different cancer with that, with the Friday, and every Friday in October being pink in honor of breast cancer awareness. At VCIS, on September 24, VCIS, Student Services hosted a Chill and Chat lunch event where students connected with the local barber and learned about his journey through East to West Barber Academy, sparking strong interest in the trade. On October 1, the Students Activities Class held a homemade cookie competition for staff in a fun lunchtime event where students joined friendly contests like building the tallest Oreo tower, creating a day full of laughter and connection. At VTEC's Suicide Prevention Initiatives, such as Kindistry, bracelet-making, brought students together and encouraged them to stay involved. They also had Hello Week with positive affirmations, scavenger hunt, and lollipops. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. That's one of my favorite pieces of the board meetings is just hearing all the things that are happening on the campuses, so thank you so much. Next up, our board reports, and we'll start with Board Member Viegas.
No report, President Naylor.
Board Member Belt?
Thank you, President Naylor. And Lila, thank you so much for highlighting the, what we call the UA, the address, the acronym for all of our
USAV?
Thank you, because that's a tremendous opportunity for you guys to actually cross-pollinate, to actually share ideas with each other about what's happening and what you want to see happen, and give feedback like you're talking about. So, that's a tremendous thing, and I want to thank Steven Emmonson and staff, who are really trying to make a difference with what we call campus culture. So, you guys are right in the middle of that. I want to apologize and highlight, because it wasn't until today I realized I missed National Custodian Day. So, thank you, all of you who continue to make sure that our buildings are not only in clean shape, but are ready to be the best resource we have for every student every day to learn well. But October came, and I don't know how I missed it, but I thought I had more days, but it was last week. Thank you so much. I want to highlight, though, too, Mountain View's Patriots Assembly was a single tremendous opportunity to remember not only why we are patriotic, living in America, but it was also a memorial to 9/11. It highlighted so many different aspects of our community with all of the, we had military and law enforcement. Matter of fact, we had children who wanted to get a signature of EMTs and on anything, a sticker on a piece of paper, because they recognized, you know what? These are important people that I want to remember. So, thanks, Principal Jendron and all the staff for making the Patriots' Day a pretty amazing morning. I also want to thank Principal Schilling, Principal Stagg, Principal Franco for letting us invade your campuses as we are continuing our opportunity to see what's happening in the day and life of every school. I will get to all 42 eventually, where those are Golden Oak, Compass, and Valley Oak. The LOFT program, Leaders of Tomorrow, one of the most amazing opportunities for young people, sophomores in all of our academies, to ask questions of industry partners, we like to call them, professionals, people who have gotten into the area that some of these students are looking at or are not sure about. But they get to ask questions and find out, what does it take to get there? How did you get there? How many times did you change your major in college? Or didn't go to college? And one of the highlights for me was that my oldest son, who is a very accomplished graphic artist and colorist, was one of the presenters at El Diamante for the Media Arts LOFT. So, he didn't even let me know he was coming. So, I just showed up, and he said, "Oh, I thought you might be here." I guess that's becoming an old hat, but it was quite remarkable to share with the sophomores there that, you know what, just like my son, you may not have any idea yet, as a freshman, as a sophomore, where and what's going to just connect for you, but it was his sophomore year that he connected, and now has had 22 years of a career in what he loves to do, make real things look animated and animated look real. So, you could actually make an income doing the same thing. I wanted to also thank First Responders Academy at Golden West and the Business and Finance at Redwood. Again, highlighting opportunity for professionals to actually give some input to our sophomores as to the direction that they're heading. I was able to attend two homecomings, both Golden West and LD, and I want to thank our activities directors, Ms. Bates, Mr. Landry, and others at Redwood as well, every one of our high schools. The activities directors, kind of an unsung job that goes on and on and on and on, but again, steering some of the campus culture into a healthy, positive opportunity for every student. And then, of course, last night, the band showcase. It's always a highlight for us. My wife and I are old band members ourselves. We won't say how many years ago that was. But yeah, it was, anyway. Quite remarkable to see every one of our high schools developing, growing, both in dance, cheer, and music. So, thank you again for the Visalia Ed Foundation for putting on this, and actually, Visalia Unified Teachers Association was our major sponsor for last night's event. Thanks again for putting that money into the event so that all the money raised goes to scholarships that will be given to both scholarships, scholarships for students, grants for teachers, both small and large, which I understand the applications are still available or about to run out, if you don't know the dates. But nonetheless, opportunity for extra things to be given every teacher who puts in application for their, what do we call it? Augmentation of resources for their classroom. Thank you.
Board Member DeYoung?
Thank you, President Naylor. I have to ditto that part about our custodians, because they really do hustle. I always feel bad talking to them when they're on the clock because I know they have limited time allowances for the items they clean. But yeah, they really do hustle. Really do appreciate them. I'd like to start just by kind of saying, well, I had the pleasure to visit the Visalia Partners and Education Committee over at Redwood, or not Redwood, Mount Whitney High School, get it right. The culinary students made us lunch, which was very, very nice. And I wanted to give them a tip, but that wasn't proper. But they made this dessert, this kind of apple fritter caramel thing that I got some to go because it was so good. So, very impressed with those kids, very thankful for the meal they gave us during the committee meeting, where we sought input from local community partners about CTE programs. And then later on, we got to visit a few classrooms, including the Ag Automotive Metalworking, see the kids in action and kind of what it's all about, because those programs are really designed to give these kids an outlet, especially if right out of high school, they want to go and get a job right away, or you know, maybe they want to go up into higher education. But either way, they're very useful skills for the Valley and very, very thankful to be a part of that and have some input on that. So, next, I'd just like to say about a couple site visits that I attended, and one being Golden Oak Elementary with Principal Schilling with my friend Paul over here, and then also the Compass Program, which is just next door, if you don't know where it's at. Very happy to see the remodel that took place over at Compass because that was long overdue. And talking with Principal Stagg, they have a lot of, lot of things they have to deal with over there, and not having to worry about, you know, how the place looks, it might be a minor thing, but it meant a lot to a lot of staff. And so, that's something that I really appreciate, and I want to say thank you to Superintendent Kirk Schrum for seeing that and pushing that through, because little things like that can make a big deal to a lot of people, especially when you take a lot of pride in what you do. It does make a big difference. Next, actually, we had a visit over at Highland Elementary, which I've only been able to see on the exterior with High Five Fridays. But that's actually a very nice, local, quaint, beautiful campus and little school there with really nice turf, probably some of the best turf in the district, which they can brag about. A lot of kids were playing on it when we were there, which was great to see. But one of the things I really enjoyed talking about, which doesn't get a lot of visibility, I feel like, we were talking about SLC classrooms and inclusion in the general ed classrooms, and how there specifically, they were seeing great results with the kiddos and the general population, or general population, gosh, I'm talking like it's a prison. General education classroom, there we go. And data and studies also show that to be true, too, that when you have that inclusion, grades tend to go up with all students. But it's not always an easy task because you have to have space, and you have to work that into a schedule. And so, Principal Jessica Paredo, we got to talk about that, and I want to say thank you for sharing that information and taking us around your school. It was, it was a joy. And then, we also got to go and check out Manuel F. Fernandez with Principal Joyner. And speaking of seeing a lot of literacy and math learning, we definitely saw a lot of that when we were there. And it was a great little tour, and it's always appreciated to see the different sites and the different dynamics, because that makes a difference when we're making decisions, as we do sometimes up here. And so, again, thank you for the tour. I know that was kind of a busy day for you, too. So, it is appreciated, and so, thank you. Last but not least, I have to give a shout-out to Denton Elementary. There was a friendly competition with a fellow neighboring school about who could sign up the most PTA members. And if I got this right, Denton Elementary now has 417 PTA members, which is probably almost nearly all the parents in that school, and grandparents, too, maybe. But that's really, I know last board meeting, I kind of talked about that, like getting involved in your PTA. So, I don't want to take full credit for those numbers, but, but that's really great to see, because you know, you hear the saying all the time about how it takes a village to raise a kid. Well, it doesn't always necessarily have to be that way, but it definitely is a heck of a lot easier when you have all that involvement. And even if it's just a membership and you don't have time to put into it, it makes a difference because it shows the students there, too, that you're willing, you care enough to, to be a member and donate a little bit to that because ultimately, it's going to affect them and, and be better for them at their school site with the money raised and the things that the PTA is able to give to that school. So, my girls are super upset that Principal Perch is not going to have to dress up in, I think, an owl costume for, if, so, unfortunately, they're upset about that. But no, it's a great thing to hear that. So, again, big shout-out. Everybody else, if you're not a PTA member, shame on you. Get signed up. It's really easy. Doesn't cost a whole lot of money. Tell your grandparents, your neighbors, whoever can be involved in the schools, be involved in schools, because it does make a difference. So, and that's all, that's all I have, so thank you.
Board Member Gabi?
Very quickly, just this, earlier, we had the performance from Divisadero Orchestra. And what was so cool about it also was the orchestra teacher was one of our former students and a very, very talented musician. And I think that's just such a shout-out to our VAPA program that he had that experience that he wanted to come back here and teach and, and share that with kids. So, very cool, and just, just was a cool moment to see them coming back and, and becoming a teacher. Obviously, someone inspired him. And with that, also have a great fall break next week. I know there's a couple of days off, and they're fabulous time of the year to get them.
Board Clerk Odo?
Just real quick, wanted to say thank you to the staff at Mineral King School. Had a chance to visit them between this meeting and the last one. Saw a lot of classrooms that felt very productive, positive, very academic. School has a really, really nice feel to it, had a great tour offered by Principal Duvall and Assistant Principal Berenberg. Really, really good, deep conversations about what was going on, really affirming the things that, that we've seen come to us through staff here at board meetings. So, thank you.
And I want to echo what you just said, Board Member Gabi. It is nice to see our students come back and be teachers or staff members and be involved in the schools. It just warms my heart, but thank you for mentioning that. I just want to give a shout-out also to Principal Adam Tompkins. I went out to Elbow Creek, and again, kind of like you, Board Member Odo, just saw kids engaged. They were happy. They were really having a good time with their, with their learning activities. And just the staff there was amazing. I did hear one term, a couple of times, that it's the hidden gem of Visalia, but it was a great time, so thank you. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Schrum?
Thank you. Just want to echo wishing everyone a happy fall break, Monday and Tuesday of next week, and safe travels for those that are traveling, and just enjoy that time to refresh and, and then move in to finish our semester strong. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to 10-point Administrative Panel Recommendations and Actions. 10.1 Recommended Expulsions. May I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
Our motion?
I'll second.
Motion made by Board Member Gabi, seconded by Board Member Belt. Call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent. Motion passes six yes, one absent, student abstains.
Recommended suspended expulsions, may I have a motion to approve the recommended suspended expulsions?
All motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member DeYoung, seconded by Board Member Vegas, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent, student abstains.
Moving on to 10.3, recommended reinstatements, may I have a motion to approve the recommended reinstatements?
All motion?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member Odo, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent, student abstains.
Recommended review, continued expulsions, may I have a motion to approve the recommended continue expulsions?
All motion?
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member DeYoung, seconded by Board Member Vegas, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent, student abstains.
Okay, moving on to the general agenda, public hearing and resolution on sufficiency of instructional materials. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Executive Director Teaching and Learning, Brian Phillips.
Thank you. Each year, in order to remain eligible to receive instructional materials funding, the governing board is required to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution affirming that every student in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials. These materials must be aligned to the state academic content standards and consistent with the curriculum framework adopted by the California State Board of Education. The subjects covered under this requirement include mathematics, science, history, social science, world languages, English language arts, including English language development components of adopted programs. On behalf of the curriculum and textbook staff, I certify that Visalia Unified School District has met all requirements for instructional material sufficiency. By adopting the resolution included in your board packet this evening, the board will fulfill its annual statutory obligation. It is the recommendation of the district that the board approve the enclosed resolution.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any board member comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing and resolution on sufficiency of instructional materials?
All motion?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gabey, seconded by Board Member Odo, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent, student votes yes.
Moving on to 11.2, Local Control Accountability Plan update, presenter Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening, President Naylor, members of the board and Superintendent Shrum. So this is an annual update that we do for our Local Control and Accountability Plan. This is the plan that the board approved in June, that was then submitted to our County Office of Education. And as a reminder, the LCAP is our three-year plan that outlines how we utilize state funds to address and to meet our student outcomes, with the focus on our students with high needs. And it embodies all three of our core beliefs and commitments, just like our plan earlier. All students can achieve high levels and demonstrate continuous growth, family community engagement, and our learning environment safe and secure. So as a reminder of our LCAP timeline, so in this time of year, in October, September, October, we are gathering data. So we're gathering data from our school site councils, from our staff, from our principals, and from our district advisory councils. That then creates a final kind of draft of our Local Control Accountability Plan, and in January, that plan gets shared with our principals, and they use it for their, to develop their school site plans for student achievement. And then in the spring, we bring that plan back to the board for a couple of readings, and then it's approved, and then again, as I mentioned, it gets submitted to the Tulare County Office of Ed. And so each year, the County Office of Ed reviews our LCAP plan, makes recommendations to us, makes some adjustments based off of dashboard data that gets released in August. And if you haven't met Marlena Salaya, she has done a great job building relationships with TCOE, as well as with our principals, and has been in that process of making sure our LCAP is updated and compliant, so that we can get the letter that's attached in your board packet on September 15th from the county office that says our LCAP's approved. And so we do have some minor adjustments, again, based on new data that comes to us. A bit of good news, we have no schools now that are in CSI comprehensive support and improvement, so that's a celebration there. We had two schools in in the prior year. There were updates, again, based off new data to student groups scoring within the red performance category, and so those adjustments were made to our, to our LCAP. And then, as we mentioned, a district where I focused on English language learners, needs assessments that are being done at school sites to make sure that we're addressing the needs and interventions for English language learners. Again, not major updates to our LCAP, but we also wanted to share on the budget side, LCAP is about 20% of our overall budget, 108 million, that's adjusted from 106 million, and that's just based off of the year-end closing activities that happen in June as we close the books and come into the new year. And with that, I will be here for questions.
Any public comment? Any board member comment? Thank you for that report, I'm excited that we don't have any schools in CSI. Woo-hoo. Okay, so I'm sorry, any, this is an information-only item, so there's no action required. Notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of provisional internship permit, Superintendent Kirkstrom?
Thank you, Madam President, this is again, for one of our provisional internship permit requests, that an employee will need a position of need in a difficult position. We have conducted the search for qualified candidates, this candidate has met the requirements to receive the PIP.
Thank you. Any comment, board member? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote, may I have a motion to approve the notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approve a provisional internship permit?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Vegas, seconded by Board Member Gabey, call for the vote.
Motion passes six yes, one absent, student votes yes.
Moving on to 11.4, warrant list, August 30th, 2025 to September 26th, 2025. Just going to move right along, right? May I have a motion to approve the warrant list from August 30th, 2025 to September 26th, 2025?
I'll so move.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Belt, seconded by Board Member Odo, may I call for the vote?
Okay, motion passes, five votes yes, one abstention, one absent, student votes yes.
Okay, and that, with that, the meeting is now adjourned.